Well, if we want to visit, I'm around tomorrow.
Definitely next week. Open enrollment.
Okay, let's just.
It doesn't end.
Future kind of runs right on the edge. There. Wrong button, no wonder it wouldn't go on. Well, it's a full give or provide after. If she doesn't come, we'll just start. She wasn't at his own work, okay.
And there was no.
Oh, yeah, okay, probably will be. We'll get rid of this.
Assuming that, assuming it works. So you can do the. Yeah.
Forty acre, no. I knew what went to go because that's overmarket. Of all the specials that are on that.
That's what it is.
They will have to. Again, the specials and take the property, but they're going to.
Yes, before we start, you know, hundred seventy eight for the.
Here, I'll show you what I'll send you.
I have to say, I don't see where it was. The other one is.
Yeah.
But this one is here.
Sunday?
Sunday. Lunch on Friday that I could.
Within the county.
It can be, don't worry about it.
West End.
That's great, because it's hard.
Okay, the. Red Forks County Commissioner will come to order. All members are present except for Commissioner Peach. The first matter for us is the legislative leaders. All right, please.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is approval of the minutes. So we have a motion for Commissioner Ross. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Inge for approval of the minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, the minutes are approved. Next is the approval of the order of the agenda. We have a motion.
To approve your agenda.
Okay, second anyone? Second, second Commissioner Knopf, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, the order of the agenda is approved. The next matter is the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda? Consent agenda that anyone wants, whoa. Hearing none, is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Ring is approved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ross. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That's good. Next is public health. You don't have any?
I have no report unless there are questions.
No report unless there are questions or responses. No questions, thank you. County Planner, Mr. Mangus.
All claims, commission, I have one simple item today. Consider the application of Stacy Sum to replat lots seven and eight block one. On Cooley subdivision and section thirty five Allen Dale Township. So the property consists of two separate bots in the existing subdivision. Post three plot is located north near fourteen street northeast and sixth avenue northeast. City of Thompson is located one mile in the northeast for reference. Lot eight currently has a growing audit. Lot nine is vacant. Both bots are owned by the applicant. Surrounding land uses our agricultural lands and our. As far as the land use plan is located within our rural residential area, the replat does perform the development policy is there within. Under our zoning ordinance, that's within our rural residential, single family district. And the proposed replat does conform to the performance standards within that zoning district. As far as the background, the purpose of the replat, just a simple line lot adjustment. It does have to be replat, it's an existence subdivision, so that's why it's before you today, otherwise you just enter D word. It approved both, both lots, so we perform the standards. And the township did recommend approval, no comments. As far as staff comments, have no concern. The applicant just wants to move a lot line from a northwesterly direction just to street east and west. This gives him a little bit more room from his house as I want to put an addition on to it. The request was approved at the planning commission meeting last Tuesday. And with that, I would recommend approval and you have any answer questions?
Where's Mr. Mangus?
We'll make a motion to approve replat of lots eight, nine, block one, hotel, Cooley subdivision.
Thank you, motion by Commissioner Knopf, is there a second? Do extra duty today, folks, because Commissioner Peach is gone. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, aye, opposed. What's the pass?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rex. County engineer, Mr.
Chairman Falk, members of the board, that one item for consideration today. That would, I would ask for contingent approval of purchase agreement for the white property. When you're getting close to closer to being able to purchase this property. We got the appraisal done, as fast as survey is. Verbal commitment from sellers on a purchase agreement, the rate of price. The last thing I'm waiting for is permanent on the versions of services and FEMA to officially approve project. It has been verbally approved, like they looked at the data, yeah, it looks good. And just wait for that. FEMA head office to sign off on it at this point. What I would, what I would hope for is if we could, I would ask for approval and then once we do have the date. And then we could close on property. We could do the purchase agreement sooner. I just don't dare put a date in the purchase agreement. So if the seller is okay with just leaving the closing date open ended, we could sign a purchase agreement. We got open ended, we could cut their earnest money check, agree to one two percent of the purchase price was people like eight thousand. I propose eight thousand even. And have that document done, ready to go. And then I have talked to the title company, they have documents, they're working on the deed restrictions. The need itself, title insurance. Prepping all that, getting that ready to go. So any day, now I don't know if it'll be tomorrow or in two weeks. Or get FEMA approval or a month. And we're pushing hard, which I've explained, and the sensitive nature of the seller situation, military. They're moving quick for a special assignment issue. Try to express that sensitive time, time nature to them and we'll see what happens, but. Yeah, it's looking very good and positive on this project. And my other request would also be that, not only just the purchase agreement, but you get approval for, we had both last meeting, potentially having a chairman or chair, it's just me. Be available to sign the closing documents when the time comes.
You don't have a real, do you have any idea on the timer?
I do not.
Yeah.
This isn't really a question, but the documents. As far as, it looks like we're spending four hundred and ten thousand of this. We should probably just put in the minutes what the county's portion of that is. And most of it is what, is it all FEMA or is it elsewhere?
He said. Also included in the packet is my estimated cost, the fourth pager.
Our total is like thirty two.
Thirty, yeah, there it is.
Yeah. So the, the two line items in bold are what I know are, so we did three appraisals, two were required that were, we just did now. That's required to establish purchase price, the other one was done a year ago, so we could establish some preliminary numbers and planning. That's why we did three, the property value, well, that came from the appraisals, you averaged the two, four hundred and ten, and then the rest are estimates. And our cost is seven percent. Feds pay for ninety, the state pays three. And that totals up to about three twenty thousand. Now, someone at thirty two thousand, two hundred and forty four dollars, we can do in kind. So the work, when, when we demo the property, my plan is, is our department's going to do that with our excavators and our trucks. Our skids here, we're demoing and hauling away. We can add up our costs for that, that counts towards the set thirty two thousand. So that's money not directly out of our pocket that our department can do. And it makes sense because you have that small bridge with a ton limit, we don't want to be driving big semis over which contractors, but you, you would use our smaller tandem end dumps to haul the debris away anyway, so.
So, and we put this on the record before, so we're spending thirty two thousand, two hundred and forty four dollars approximately. Rather than four hundred thousand or so for the bridge.
Oh, a new bridge.
Okay, bridges have gone up, okay.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's my, then my whole angle, the whole time is.
Yeah.
Save money. Hypothetically, even if we didn't get the grant. It'd be cheaper for us to buy the house outright.
Yeah.
Then we'd be putting the bridge. By far.
Okay. So do we need a motion? Maybe we should have a motion so that either the chairman or the vice chair could sign with documents if they become available before the next meeting.
Yeah, let me make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
That's relative to the
purchase contract.
Purchase contract on the.
Seller's name is not on the purchase contract. Name isn't there.
Well, we do have that. Would you, yeah. Okay.
Well, it's related to the residence hazard mitigation grant project, so if we have a, we have a motion for that, is it it? Do we have a second? Eight, seconded, okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Would there be any considerations for the actual closing of the property itself, or is that included? Natural closing of the property, not just the purchase agreement itself, or is that included?
If we need anything extra, there's the purchase agreement signed, that includes the closing, but we don't have the date for the closing, that's the only issue.
Right, correct.
We can make that situation. I think I seconded.
You want, you want to add it to the motion then?
Yeah. And also.
So the clothes, we can take care of the closing also.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, oh, that's okay, wait, so we've added that in, all in favor signify by saying, yeah, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you for bringing that up.
That is all I have at this moment. There's a little tidbit, we're still getting hammered on these bridges. And I sent the list out before, those are another list that's due by December seventh. I was quite frustrated and I called the DOT, I'm like, so we done yet? He sent me a preliminary list that's due to work right now that includes, like, another thirty bridges, and that's the end of that. So. I don't know, it's just, it's overwhelming to try and even plan what we should do or what's our biggest priority because they, it's like every month, we just get another list and another list.
Good.
Once this last part gets done, then at least I can probably sit back and reanalyze and I'll put in my spreadsheet and look at them and prioritize and make my list and then I, I don't.
Well.
We're not being picked on, my, our other color parts are in the same perfect, so.
I guess maybe the redeeming grace is that the roads are in pretty good shape for you. You're supposed to say yes, Mr. Paul.
The dry year helps, yeah. That dry year does help it. Thank you, that is all, thank you.
Mr. Ray Don, the Director of Administration, Mr. Ford, are you with us? I see your picture.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I, I have an unreliable Wi-Fi signal, so you have to stare at a very outdated professional picture. Yes, I'm here. Hello? Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Ms. Lee, can you hear us?
Enter your meeting ID, followed by pound.
Yes, I can hear you, but I can also hear Tom. Are you not able to hear him?
You have not entered any numbers. Please re-enter your meeting ID.
Gracie, I'm going to dial in.
Okay.
Phone, if you can look, I don't know if they can hear you.
I wonder if the sound is on.
Sorry?
We can hear you.
Oh, you can hear me now, wonderful, okay. I, I have an, I have unreliable Wi-Fi right now, Mr. Chair, so I'll try to move quickly just in case. The first thing I have for the commission is the updated inclement weather closing policy. I won't get too much into it as most of it was in the memo I sent the board, but essentially what this proposes now is that it, it puts the discretion of closing the county office building and the courthouse on, on the chairman. And, and we just, we've used it already, we used it last week, it, it works out fine. So through the new process, the Director of Administration and Director of Emergency Management will keep the chairman or, or chair apprised of deteriorating weather conditions, weather forecasts. Director of Administration, Director of Emergency Management will communicate with the National Weather Service and our institutional partners. Along with, with highway and, and Sheriff's Department and others. Just to get a, a good assessment of how things are doing for deteriorating weather conditions. And make a recommendation, and then it, it'll be the chair's decision to close due to inclement weather. If, if the chair decides to do so, Ms. Gels would then notify employees through the code red system. Director of Administration will notify media and other partners of the decision. This, this, the inclement weather closure would apply to all non-essential county employees and telework employees. So barring any questions for me, would be asking the commission for approval on the new inclement weather policy.
Any questions to Mr. Ford?
Yes, from the sheriff, this is something that you were doing in the past, are you willing to give up making the decision on inclement weather to close?
Yes.
I'm sure that administration will be talking to you guys. Be out there, know what's going on, so.
This was actually at the request of the, of the sheriff and the chairman to redo this policy, Commissioner Ring.
Any other questions? We have a motion to approve the inclement weather policy. Motion by Commissioner Ross. Second by Commissioner Knopf. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. On the weather policy, it's passed.
Mr. Chair, there's a bit of a domino effect with the approval of this new inclement weather policy. It's, it's replacing policy one oh five thirteen, which is the, the old inclement weather policy and employee conduct policy, they were one in the same policy. It, it's staff's recommendation that they not be the same policy. So you also will need to approve a standalone employee conduct policy that was in your packets as well. That was updated by Ms. Deal and Human Resources. So that also replaces one oh five thirteen at, at staff's recommendation. So you, the, the board would need to approve it as a new poli, a standalone policy.
It's in essence the same policy, only it's standalone.
Yes, sir, that's, that's correct.
Yeah, so Chairman Falk and your peers, they're, the only changes that have been made, we carved out the inclement weather policy. And there was one piece in there that had to do with what happens on your first day as an employee. Which didn't make any sense in that type of a policy. And then we updated it to include things like our sexual harassment language, so it mirrors. But in essence, this is the code of conduct as a county employee, these are your expectations. So it's a pretty standard and it gets very, it, it's updated, but it very much mirrors what the other policy was.
The other questions? We have a motion to approve policy one oh five dash thirteen, employee contact to work rules. Motion by Commissioner Knopf, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Inge, any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion passes. Next.
Mr. Chair, the final domino here in the policy game is the telework policy. With the new inclement weather policy applying to all non-essential county employees and telework employees. We did have to adjust that, that part of the telework policy to include inclement weather to telework policies. So we would need the commission to approve that amended language in the telework, so in other words, in the previous telework policy, if the county office building and the courthouse closed. There are some telework policies, I'm sorry, employees that were expected to continue performing their duties. As we talked through the issue, that actually could cause further problems with, with employees and human resources. So it was staff's recommendation and to include Commissioner Ross that if the chairman closes the Cobb in the courthouse due to inclement weather. It applies to all non-essential county employees to include telework, telework employees. So just need the commission to approve that amended language in the telework policy.
We have a lot of employees on telework.
Did you hear that, Mr. Ford?
I'll defer to Ms. Deal, she probably has a better understanding than I would.
Microphones are working pretty well, I didn't know that you could hear that, so.
Currently, so this telecommuting policy would not pertain to anybody at the phone, if they have to have their own. So when we talk about non-zone employees, there are a handful of people who are pretty much full-time or three quarters time, teleworking, I'd say maybe six that I can pick up. But a lot of them are almost everybody's back in the office.
So will they ever come back to the office?
Some may, depending upon, some positions are, we've kind of left it up to the department. To the department head, as long as the services are being done. It's been extremely beneficial for some of the departments to be able to do a hybrid. Where they work in the office when they need to be in the office and their manager tells them they need to be in the office, they're able to work for multiple. Because a lot of those are highly detailed, non-customer facing positions. I'll use my own department as an example. We had to get payroll done, there was a blizzard. We already have the ability to complete payroll, working.
And we're glad he did.
And, and many people are glad, many people are glad that he did. Roberta works mainly, she's hybrid, she, I'd say she's probably thirty percent of the time in the office. Seventy percent of the time remotely, but it's not always at home because sometimes she's at the jail, like she's been for the last two weeks with open enrollment. I know that Debbie has a person in her office that's been working predominantly from home and ambiguiditis. It works very well for her because she has two of her employees that live far from the city. And so there are times when, oh, the weather might be bad at their part of the state. And they have the ability to work remotely and still get the work done there.
So it's a limited.
So it's very, very limited. The largest percentage of telecommuting happens with the economic assistance at the zone, and that's a whole state driven piece.
We have a motion to approve. Thank you, Mr. Ross. We have a second on the telecommuting policy. Second from Commissioner Inge. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Telecommuting. Beauty.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, the next thing is the BM Finley Consulting contract expires December thirty first, twenty twenty two, I think. All, all, I think the entire board knows who General Finley and General, General Rue are, they've worked for the county for about eight years, nine years now. Recently, Chairman Falk asked me to start renegotiating a contract extension with General Finley and General Rue. If the board recalls back in July, the board had opted not to renew the contract. So what I, what I've done, Ms. Leon and I, we had a few different meetings with General Finley, General Rue. And so what you have before you is a proposed contract extension for twenty twenty three. It would run through the entire year of twenty twenty three. I did redefine the scope of the consultant's work in, in, in the contract, it would be more project driven. It also reduces their retainer from eight thousand dollar a month to six thousand, five hundred dollars a month. Reduces their travel from twenty five thousand dollars, which is essentially four trips with the community. To twelve thousand dollars, which is essentially two trips with the community. So in, in apples to apples, that's a reduction from a hundred and twenty one thousand dollars to ninety thousand dollars. So if, if the commission does indeed want to renew the contract for twenty twenty three. Would be looking, staff would be looking for an approval. And I, I spoke with Ms. Nelson, and essentially what you would do is you would approve that today. And look to amend Director of Administration's base retention budget in twenty twenty three. From cash carry forward out of twenty twenty three. I'll ha- happy to answer any questions.
And I, and I'll just make a comment. I asked Mr. Ford to look into this and I, actually I was opposed or voted against since back a bunch of time, going back about six months because I thought we were in a pretty good position. And we were six months ago, but we're not in the same position that we were then and in that the air force isn't communicating with us. So it's very difficult to know what's going on with that. But we, I've had members from the BRIC contacting and thinking that we should be paying these gentlemen for another year until we get past this hurdle. And I think others on the commission have also had contact with the BRIC members in the community of this also. I'll throw it open for discussion. Anybody else? Is there a question?
We are in really a different position and I think the, the Air Force actually canceled one of the meetings because the headquarters telling them it just laid off for a while. We were kind of in a vacuum and it didn't fit for Rue and Finley working to get some other meetings going and tapping with the sources of information that we could not have done ourselves. I think we would really be in a lack of knowledge situation. But you guys are very well-connected, they're very, very useful. They know how to line up meetings, they know what topics to talk about with different people in those offices. And at this, I think it's a critical time to keep them one more year. So I'm strongly in favor of this.
Commissioner Falk, I concur with both of you guys. I just, just seeing the silence that has been going on now between the city, the county, the airport. I have concerns and I think we need somebody up front to work on our behalf to ensure that we could keep places like Grand Sky and Grand Forks Air Force Base a viable operation. Without their help, I don't know that we can do that, so.
Yes, we have unanimous vote on that, it sounds like. I think given, given what's going on with, okay, we need all the help we can get. And what's going to come with that. And so, and again, with Grand Sky and the Air Force Base particularly. And just see for community and what have you, so I mean, I'm all in.
I'm glad Commissioner Knopf mentioned Grand Sky because they, they help us on Grand Sky also. We have, you know, it's a plus for this county, but we have over a billion dollars worth of aircraft city out there on Grand Sky right now, which is incredible. It's going to get even larger in the next year or so. That's a given, but critical thing is that we have to have that runway for those companies to operate off it. So if we don't have that runway. Yeah, it's, you know, I think after this year or after the next year, then there can be some, there are some various other thoughts and how to deal with this other thing. Paying the generals, but that's a year down the road, so.
How's it gonna work if something happens and we lose our face?
A problem out there, yeah.
Yeah, I know, but are we looking at that considering that?
It's always, it's always in the back of mind. I think those are so, they become so integrated right now. I'm not thinking that's a good possibility.
I do.
So.
Do we have a motion then? So move, wait, just a second. Okay, so we make a motion that we retain the generals and the money to come out of cash carryover.
Okay, and we have a second. Second by Commissioner Inge.
I'm gonna have a second.
Be beat by a nose.
You can do the other half second.
Okay. Under the record, both Commissioner Inge and Commissioner Knopf. All right, we have, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's passed.
Miss, Mr. Chair, to answer Commissioner Knopf's question, the county would have to find a way to operate a air traffic control tower radar system and maintain a twelve thousand four hundred foot runway if we, if the base closed, so.
We're getting, you know, Mr. Ford, we're getting closer to being able to do that.
May possibly, possibly. Mr. Chair, probably being the one standing between everyone here and dinner, I'm gonna move on really quickly to, I had sent the commission an email on Friday about the site development lease amendments. Myself, Ms. Leon, Commissioner Falk, Commissioner Inge, we've had some meetings with Tom Sawyer. And I know I've talked about this with the commission in the past about some amendments coming down the pipeline. So just, just preface this conversation is I'm not asking the commission to approve anything today. This is, but I'm gonna look for some consent from the commission. But the county, but county staff in Grand Sky would like to renegotiate some sections of the site development lease. So in other words, our fifty-year lease between the county and the air force, specifically section, basically the bulk of section eight and section twelve. Those are specifically in the notice to proceed. Currently, the county has to put a package together for any project, send that to Grand Forks Air Force Base Civil Engineering and they have to staff it and send it to Air Force Civil Engineering Center. We, as a county, would prefer to see Grand Forks Air Force Base have the designation, the authority to do that locally. We would, we also want the county EUL to be treated like all the other EULs in the air force, which is a lot of the other EULs. They have a local notice to proceed authority of up to two million dollars. Our EUL does not have that. So that's the, we're gonna go to the air force and say we want to be treated like the Kirkland EUL or any other EUL on that notice to proceed issue. The second is an annual audit. So in the site development lease, it requires a full auditing of Grand Sky Development Company. This was actually insisted upon by Commissioner Schmuzik and Ed Nirodi at the time of negotiation. And I do understand why. This is a pretty big project. It had never been done before at the time. I, as staff, am comfortable with, with changing how that audit is done so that the audit would be specifically on the gross revenue of participation rent of Grand Sky. It would be much cheaper for Grand Sky Development Company. It would be much quicker and it wouldn't be any different information than what I already receive in their quarterly financial reports. So we would like to go back to the air force and get that changed. We, as a county, can always ask for a full auditing if we feel it's prudent. But I'm comfortable with that change. And then finally, there's a section for third-party oversight. That's required by the air force. North Dakota already requires the independent third-party oversight on construction development projects. And so this just adds another layer and another expense and quite frankly slows construction projects down at Grand Sky, which when we have in North Dakota a six-month construction window, can actually be quite concerning. So we already have this. This is just an add-on by the air force. There would be no negative impact to the county to have these sections renegotiated or amended in the SDL. But as it currently stands, it puts unnecessary time and financial burden on Grand Sky Development Company. So not looking for commission action, but what I am looking for is A, any questions from the board and B, just board consent to allow staff to begin renegotiating those sections of the SDL with the air force.
Just a comment for the board, because I've been involved, but I don't think there's any prob, any problem with renegotiating with the air force. The bigger problem is they may now want to renegotiate, so.
Yes, that's true.
Start the process, but we may never arrive, we may never have anything to vote on anyway. Any other comments from commissioners? Is that it, Mr. Ford?
Yes, sir, that's all I have.
Thank you. We'll look forward to seeing you later in the week.
Yes, sir.
Now to Ms. Wong's.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I have two items for the commission's review today. The first item is in relation to bond funds for the Grand Forks County Correctional Center renovations. Ms. Nelson has informed me that we are in receipt of the bond funds at this time. I would request a motion from the board to have the architect fees that have been billed already and those moving forward to come from those bond funds. This is a more appropriate allocation than using it from the ARPA funds just based on the requirements of those ARPA funds.
I have a question. Shouldn't we pay back or replace the ARPA funds that we've already paid out with the bond money?
Yeah, I'm determined that's exactly what we'll do.
Okay, so going forward, we'll pay it out of the bond, bond money and we'll also replace the ARPA funds. There's some red tape there, but we have to do it, so. Anybody have a question on that?
No.
We have a motion then for that?
I make a motion.
Pay the architect fees out of the bond funds and replace the fees that we paid back into our property bond. Okay, we have the motion, we have a second. Second, okay, we have a second for making it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passed, good.
Thank you. The second item I have for the board is in relation to the canvassing board and the recount committee. Statute provides that the chair of the commission serve on the canvassing board and on the recount committee except the commission race, those commissioners that were up for reelection can't serve in this capacity because of the obvious conflict. So the statute provides that the board is to appoint a replacement when that is the case.
Okay, and I think that is Commissioner Knopf and she's aware of it. Graciously accepting once again. So maybe we should have a motion to formally appoint.
So moved.
Okay. Second, Commissioner Knopf, we have a motion and a second to appoint her to serve on the canvas and recount board for the election. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes.
Thank you, I have nothing further for the board.
Okay, committee reports. Commissioner Ross.
Fair Board did not have a meeting this month because they didn't have enough people that could make it. And EPL is tomorrow at noon. Other than that, that's all I've got right now.
Commissioner Inge.
I have a question. With respect to the Fair Board, were they out with the last week group that was looking to apply for a grant? It is.
I haven't heard anything because we didn't have a meeting after that, last time we talked about it, so.
So Haley, if they go through the historic society to apply for a grant, last time they did that, we didn't sign off on it as the owner. They did. And so going forward with this one, who, who signs up on it? Just so Bob knows so that when he meets with them, it would seem like we as the owner would be the ones that, because we're the ones that are gonna come back to when, if it, there's a problem. So, you know, and right now until two thousand thirty, there's a grant out there, if something happens, we're responsible to pay it back. So I just don't want to get in that position again. I don't want you to get in that position again.
Commissioner Knopf, members of the commission, it would likely depend on the, the nature of the grant and any conditions on that grant, such as the repayment and who is responsible for that repayment. If Commissioner Knopf or the Fair Board have any more details, I'd be happy to review that and determine if it should be approved by the board of commissioners or the fair board.
I have the old document that I was able to get. I think I shared that with you at one point. And, but I can share it with you again and give Bob a copy of it. But I just don't want the county held liable and, and right now we are. Something goes wrong out there and happens. And I don't want to put the county in that position again. So they really should be working with you. Running everything past you.
I'd be happy to review it.
I got your desk, for sure.
I have another question.
That's okay.
So with the EPL, so today I read something in the Herald about the city of Grand Forks and East Grand Forks and Hope County and Grand Forks County being liable for, making us liable for some study or hiring somebody to be whatever, where we are.
The suggestion, it hasn't come to fruition yet, but the, most of the cities, the cities are suggesting that for it, the cities and the two counties here, the the study, the initial study, I guess it would be on the Merrifield Bridge Project. Is that fair, Mr. West?
Yeah, nobody's gonna help us.
No, I know.
The county bridge, the Merrifield Bridge.
The timeline of what's going on with that is, so the city of East Grand Forks issued an RFP to hire a consultant to study an inner-city bridge location and try to get funding and try to get a project on it months ago.
Thirty-second. Yeah. Thirty-second happened, okay.
Well, City of Grand Forks found out about it and they got hold of City of East Grand Forks and said, hey, we want to be a part of it, right? So they hopped on the proposal and then as it went through, kept thinking about it, they said, well, there's a little disagreement or controversy over where the inner-city bridge could go. My idea, maybe the bridge at twenty-six over the Red River would be a great location. So then they got ahold of Grand Forks and Hope County and said, hey, would you guys want to be a part of the selection process to get a consultant on board? So I got involved as just being on a selection committee to select and solve through this whole process. There was multiple meetings. It was my understanding was told to me that the cities were paying for this thing. Also, the scope of work is very difficult to narrow down because the ultimate idea here is to try to find funding and try to find a location where a bridge could go. Well, in order to do that, you have to go through the NEPA process or the NEPA process, you can't pre-determine the end result. You can't, you can't pick politically where the bridge goes before you start the NEPA process. You're like putting the cart before the horse. So if you really want to do it right, you gotta enter the NEPA process and let that process dictate where it could go. And to get there and to get the funding and go through all that, like we have myself and Rich Sanders, Hope County engineers, members of City of Grand Forks Engineering and City Council and East Grand Forks Administration and East Grand Forks Council. It was very difficult for us to try to get a scope of work that we thought would work. I don't, and basically the scope of work we came up with was to have the consultant help us write the scope of work. That's what the proposal is right now. Interviews were held. SRF consulting was the. Interviews were held, SRF Consulting was the recommendation of the selection committee. They haven't been hired. The two cities are trying to agree on the scope of work, and that's where you saw the article in the Herald where the city of Grand Forks is trying to decide what they want to do. And in the internal discussions of staff, it was recommended that maybe the two counties were cost-sharing this whole project because of one of the locations could be the 26 crossing.
Aren't we doing Merrifield Bridge at some point anyhow?
The state?
No, not that I'm aware of. There's nothing in the books or nothing in plan other than it's in like a long-term EPL plan, and eventually someday there would be a bridge there, but we have no funding identified, we have no timeframe identified to my knowledge.
I think the only thing we indicated to that group that came is that we would support them in their initial, I forget the term that they were seeking, but if you remember the folks from.
So, Mr. Chair, you're referring to the chamber when they came, when they came and presented, they asked the commission to take the lead on a on a Merrfield Road interchange, and then I don't recall the commission committing to that, but it was reported in the Grand Forks Herald and the Chamber re-blast the next day that you had committed to it. I don't recall you actually committing to it though, but that's what you're referring to, and.
Most there is some indication we have publicly that we would support them in their efforts.
There's, for a Merrfield Bridge, we, someone's got to start the process, you know, and the cities are looking to the counties to lead that process, and the counties that have to come up with the money for the environmentals, the NEPA, the permitting, the hydrology, the hydrology studies, and there's, you just can't get state and federal funding until all of that is completed. And so at some point, if there's, if a Merrfield Bridge is truly gonna happen, the two counties, and in my opinion, the two cities, all have to actually come together and put some money forward and start all these permitting and hydraulic tests and NEPA tests. And until that starts, nothing, there's, nothing's gonna happen for a Merrfield Bridge.
The process is, was kind of backwards in how it should work, in my opinion. However, Mr. Ford is correct, if if there ever is gonna be one, this is probably the way it would need to happen. Nobody on our staff, the Grand Forks County, has the expertise to go after a federal-level grant competitively. We, and we were, well, the committee, the selection committee was also trying to figure out, would you do the NEPA process first? And then have that figured out, and then go after it, after you go after your grant, and includes a NEPA process, because a true NEPA process can be very expensive. Probably seven figures. And, and where does that come from? This scope of work, you know, if they're saying a hundred, I think it was a hundred and fifty thousand is the number they're throwing around, and they're probably looking for us to pay twenty-five percent of that. Was, was looking for potentially our share. That's tip of the iceberg, right? Let's just be frank, let's, you know, just get that out there, that's what I mean, this is the scoping phase. Right? That's just to figure out, how do we really do this? How do we go after it? How do we get four government entities to work together? That's what that consultant would have to put this all together. It's a coordinating challenge. And they know that, we had that, that discussion with the consultant heavily as far as for their approach and how they would do that. So if if, and Mr. Ford and I did request that the city put together a formal letter of request to the county of what their expectations are, I would anticipate that coming someday here in the near future, so for the board's consideration. To my knowledge, we have no money identified to do anything with this, so we, you know, would have to figure that out as well too, so. On the flip side, though, if we don't do it, I don't think a bridge will ever happen. If a bridge is ever to happen there, this is a step that needs to happen. I don't know if this is the right time or not, but.
If it's gonna happen, yeah.
Correct.
Bottom line is, is that when this all started out, it was an inner-city, because that's where the problem is, that's where the bottleneck is. Merrfield isn't gonna accomplish that, it's not gonna take away any bit of the congestion and all of those issues, so it's almost like a moot point in my estimation, for what that's worth, that it be in Merrfield. I mean, it doesn't make any sense when the problem is congestion inner-city.
And those are cities.
And those are not our issues, and they will not be here if we, for us, if we, for you, if you ever put together a national bridge.
The city does not want to deal with an inner-city bridge.
I know that, I know, we all know that.
But they want to support the county in our endeavors.
Oh, I know.
To understand the Merrfield Bridge. Because, I mean, you look at Thirty-Second Avenue, there's twenty-two driveways and empty on Thirty-Second Avenue.
I know, I know, that's, that's a big issue. I know that is, but it doesn't make any sense to shift it to be our problem.
Yeah, oh, and yeah.
And that's exactly what, then, then people are off the hook, saying, well, we got you a bridge, Merrfield.
But you know, you look at the development out there, out to the Merrfield Road, it's almost out there already, you know? If you go on the west side of Washington, eighty-one south, if you want to call it that.
The problem is east side coming over to North Dakota. It is that North Dakota's going over to the east side. People on the east side come here to go to school, go to work, to shop, to entertain, be entertained, whatever. We aren't going over to East Grand Forks for them, so it's their need, not ours.
That's why they brought that property adjacent with Thirty-Second Avenue on the east side before the city of Grand Forks committed to anything. So.
Large, you're opening a whole can of worms when you go there, that one, and it's not gonna solve the problem.
There are traffic studies that have been done to, and you know, as done, that we couldn't have them come in and explain why that road has been chosen and the traffic impacts. It does have a small impact on city traffic and you know, it's, 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 I'll say the sugar beet traffic, you know, get them away from downtown, and they would circle around on that bridge that would help that.
Doesn't help the eight o'clock, if you come down at eight o'clock in the morning, it's just clogged.
Mine's sugar beet, I mean, what are you dealing with? You're dealing with a couple of weeks a year.
Yeah.
Whereas the congestion is three hundred and ninety-five days a year, or, you know, somewhere in that. So, makes no sense at all to me.
I think, first of all, a city, whoever's involved would have to come to the commission to talk to us about sharing that money.
Correct.
And that's down the road.
Right.
And then even that, the county would have to decide whether they could even come up, which I think would be a remote possibility right now with their share of money that would be needed for a bridge.
Right now, the city of East Grand Forks is the leader. They issued the initial RFP, and then the other city and the other two counties were brought in. So, and, you know, you saw the paper where the city of Grand Forks is having some challenges themselves internally, as far as how that board's gonna handle it, so. I mean, frankly, if the city of Grand Forks, if it, if it dies at that level, we're probably done, for now, potentially. So I don't know where it would go if the city of Grand Forks did not get onboarded, I don't know if we would or not, so. Yeah. I think we I'll just be late until the city makes a formal request, because they're leaving, we didn't issue the RFP. We're not, we're not the lead agency. If I answer your questions, they're muddy the water even more.
I think we're good. For now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Where is this?
Commissioner Ringan, you want to get in?
Yeah, I just want to take my time, instead of talking about committee assignments, I want to thank Commissioner Knopf and Commissioner Falk for some tremendous work over the years I've been on this mission. And you've got many years in common, you've done a great job. What I like is this is a civil group. We disagree, but nobody gets crazy, and you know, we all feel that way sometimes, but thank you so much to both of you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
You know, if I can jump on, and I should have said something when my committee report came around, I was gonna do it at the end anyway, but you know, I know a Tom, I was a deputy, he was at State's Attorney's Office. We were on employee negotiation committees together for a long time. When I was sheriff, I dealt with the commission, both of you. And just great working relationships that I'll remember for a long time. You both will be missed. You are a big part of this commission, and I don't know that those voids can be filled, to be honest with you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Commissioner Knopf, you're next.
Sorry. Well, you heard, I'm gonna be next week and or so, two weeks with the election recount and then with the canvassing, I think the canvassing's on the twenty-first, Debbie. And then on the twentieth and the twenty-ninth is the recount, and so you owe me. And so, Library Board tomorrow, that'll be my last meeting, and that's about the extent with that, but my next question is, is that whatever, you know, we had the article in the paper about Grand Forks County Special Fu-Fund Meeting postponed due to inclement weather. Were, we were quoted saying that implied, or to me, read that we would be the three million dollars that we would be, in ARPA money that we that we would commit to contingent upon, and it made it sound like we should be discussing this, or it made it sound like we were gonna pay the three million whether Fu-Fund came through.
No, that's not true.
Okay, but if you read the article, that's what it says, and so my question to you, and I've been approached on it, I know, and I.
I brought it up to Cory, and he acknowledged it. I don't know if he's gonna fix it or not, though.
Okay, yeah, because I called, and I left the message, so yeah.
Because I've been approached on it, and people are saying, what's up with this, you know, and, because it's different than what I've been telling them. And so when it's there in the paper, like I say, it's a three-million-dollar oops, you know, and people can come back to us and say, but it said in the Herald, this is what you're going to do, and the city can do that to us. And then how do you ever? It's in the Herald, so, you know, and that's what public's talking about, and so I think the Herald, I mean, oops happens, it's, you know, but we need to fix it then. And so that would be my request, and hopefully would support me in that.
I'm sure it'll be taken care of.
Yeah, I, like I said, I brought it up to Cory.
I know, but that was on the ninth, or the eighth, or whatever, that was a while back already.
I'll tell him again tonight, I'm not sure why he hasn't corrected it.
Or you could put it in today's, the article, and today.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate that, yeah. I just really think that that's important, because we're sending out mixed messages, and you're sending out a message that is gonna open a door to make some ugly things for you, and, you know, there's a contingency, and I think we need to stick to that.
Yeah, you know, as Commissioner Knopf said, if we, tomorrow's a principle, copy of the Herald, it would be nice for it to be in that one, because not everybody gets the Herald online when it's tomorrow, so it would be nice if it was in that paper.
You can go, what, I think it's the October nineteenth special committee that we had that discussion, and so.
Regarding.
Well, it was our special meeting on ARPA, and that we would commit three million, but it was three different specifics there that were listed. If you view the, the eye or the video, the minute, well, the minute, well, it doesn't reflect it in the minutes, but it does in the, in the video. So, would appreciate that, and so other than that, I don't have anything else. Thank you, it's been wonderful. I miss you all. It's my job.
Okay, the only thing I've got, as I was at the jail meeting, and I asked Commissioner Ross, he attended with me, it's something that'd be off, and he needs some continuity with that, and so here is some of the grim data, which often I won't be too concerned about, but it is a problem.
Oh, yes, we will.
It is a problem, you know, we won't be, because it will probably affect your taxes, but it is a problem, because right now, the building is, it was about thirty-nine million, and we've only had lending for thirty-one. And so we parsed it out into three different sections, detention, beds, and administration, and of course, administration, we could make cuts, or we can make some major cut. It seems fairly simple to me, but then the reason that we need some administration, among other reasons, is that we're taking, in the, in the Correctional Center at the present time, we're taking some of the administrative offices to remodel that with the million-dollar ARPA money for the infirmary and medical and everything, which is insane. So if we don't build some administrative offices, we're not gonna be able to remodel that medical center. So it's just really conundrum, so it won't be in the next two weeks or month, or whatever, they're gonna try to put together a plan where they could get it down to thirty-five million, and the commission in the future may have to add one more mill in order to accomplish what they want out there. And unfortunately, it'll only be sixty-four beds instead of twenty beds, which we initially started, but that's the cost of construction right now, and there's some, the engineers and architects and managers have built some money in, thinking maybe it'll be a little less, and we can only hope, much like our Blue Cross Health insurance, unless we get hope for the best there, but construction costs, I don't know that that's gonna happen, so anyway, just a heads up for those on the commissions. Commissioner Ross will stay on top of that, that discussion. Let's see, that's, that's all I got, and I, you know, I, I too, I want to thank Commissioner Knopf, sixteen years on this commission. She and I go back, I want to say decades, we just, we won't say the number, but a long, long time.
At least twenty years.
Yeah, yeah, we're both working here, and friends, we've known each other through business, et cetera, so it's just been great working with her. You know, there's never been a commissioner that's been better prepared for any of the meetings, and Commissioner Knopf, she reads every document, God bless her for it, word for word, and that's important, and it's time-consuming, and it can give you a headache and a short period of time, so.
Right.
And I know, I note that on you, and always first to volunteer, and you take some just awful assignments in my mind with a smile and gracious. And I'm not referring to you, Mr. West.
She had volunteered for highway, I said.
She has the best portfolio, but I mean, eight years ago. These above and beyond the portfolio, it's much like the canvas and the recount, which is, that's time-consuming, and I, yeah, elections, and I just appreciate that a lot. And, you know, personally, I'm pretty satisfied with leading the commission, it's in a pretty good position right now, although financially, you're gonna have some really rough times here in the next three years or so with some of the construction problems we've got, and money goes. And I'll just leave the, the present commission members, and those that are gonna be on the commission, with the thought that keep pushing the Grand Sky Project, it's a project that's like no other in the United States. It's given Grand Forks a name. Wherever you go in Washington, they know about this community because of the Grand Sky issue out there. And take care of our employees, they're just really the they're really great, and of course, Commissioner Knopf and I, well, Mr. Ross, you're also employed at one that we're doing here, so we respect that, and and I know that there's some issues financially for them, and the commission can find some money down the road to take care of some of those problems, but, you know, I'll be candid with the employees, and I was with a group I met with here about a month ago. you know, I'll be candid with the employees and I was with a group I met with here about a month ago that it's gonna be difficult to do. So with that, let's move on to unfinished new business. You know, we don't wanna get muddled here. Yeah, Commissioner, again, as I was going, I think we can finish the meeting without. Thank you very much, yes.
We'll be attached. Thank you.
Yeah, unfinished new business, the Brady Marks proposal from.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I do have a proposal from Brady Marks to do our audit. We currently have the state officers doing our audits and this year and for a few years, they haven't been to our building to do the audit. They've done it all remotely. Remotely. And there is a benefit to having it done, having it in person. Brady Marks would come here to do our audits. When you do a remote audit, they tend to drag out. So they started our audit in April and finished September thirty in this year. So it was a very long time since they've been audit. So I am requesting that you accept Brady Marks' proposal. They have a one-year option and they have a three-year option. The three-year option spreads out the initial costs over that period of time. So my recommendation, you would go with their option to the three-year.
It's about the same as the state.
It is. Our bill for this year was thirty-five thousand dollars.
Well, yeah, I'll just throw one comment. You know, we talked about local businesses. And I think if we can give local businesses, they're taxpayers in our community. And it's gonna be the same cost and they're local, they'll come into the superintendent's office. So I think it's a good thing. I'll open it up. Somebody wants to make.
I would make a motion to approve that three-year contract with Brady Marks.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved. Okay, correspondence. Anything there at the fifty-ninth annual Water Conference Convention? Just to notice.
Yeah, it's just a notice you could attend if you wanted to.
And anything else for the order? Yes.
Wanted to extend a thank you to Debbie for another very successful election. And you did a great job. Your staff did a great job. It's appreciated. We have the best auditor in the state.
Oh, that was very nice of you to say. And we have to thank Diane for all the work and the help she did on the election that no one knows about. On the ADA set that had to get done quickly and she stepped in and did it. So thank you very much, Diane.
Nick was included.
Yes. You know what? I say that. It was Nick West and it was Phil. And they were amazing. And how quickly.
Stooges.
He put more time into it than I did.
Yeah, I did, but.
Commissioner Knopf is always delegating.
I think I can.
No, yeah.
It's it's fairly poor pay, but all the coffee you can drink. Okay, anything else? Anyone? Best time, Mr. Okay, how we make a motion that you do. Thank you. Second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And we're adjourned. Thank you.